Call this meeting of the Brooklyn City Council to order. Mary Jove, if you could do the roll call, please. Mary Belbeer?
Here.
Kevin Tansky?
Here.
Andy Sellhertz?
Here.
Katie Gallagher?
Here.
Tony DiMarco?
Here.
Ron Van Kirk?
Here.
Kathy Pucci?
Here.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right. We're going to start our meeting off tonight with the Holiday House Decorating Contest winners. The mayor's going to go up to the podium and announce people. If you could come up and get your prizes. And don't feel obligated to stay after this if you don't want.
Okay, the committee has given me a few notes to say. The committee was amazed by how many houses were decorated for the holidays. The committee once again would like to recognize Delora Avenue as the most decorated street in the city of Brooklyn. Annually, the committee makes an effort to recognize different residents for this city holiday event as a way of acknowledging everyone's efforts. And this year, for the first time, there were so many houses decorated so nicely. Instead of three-place winners, we're going to have an honorable mention. And this year, the honorable mention award goes to Max and Barbara Eichman of 8914 Morton Second place goes to 4572 Rodone Road, Kathleen and Jim Furco, Walter and Stephon Majiski. They're not here? Okay. We'll make sure it gets to them.
Well, thank you for everyone getting in the holiday spirit. Just a reminder, on Friday, December 25th is Christmas Day, so the city buildings will be closed. We will now proceed with our regular council meeting. Tonight on the agenda, we have a request to advertise for bids for the 2016 Streets This includes Brook High Drive, Apple Creek Drive, Heather Lane, Ira Avenue West, Melody Lane, Pepper Ridge Drive, Delora Avenue, Vendale Avenue, Saybrook, Sunny Lane, Autumn Lane, Spot Patching, Memphis Avenue, and West 62nd Street. This is a total of $927,200. Next, we have a request for a 12-month extension on HVAC maintenance for the recreation center. This is a total amount of $26,868. This is the same price for 2015. Next, we have a request for a change order relating to landfill closure. This is for $11,480, and it's for 2,870 additional silt sock for the landfill. We also have an ordinance or a resolution requesting the county fiscal officer to advance taxes from the proceeds of the 2015 levies. This is under the ORC. We have a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission in authorizing the necessary tax levies, the county fiscal officer. This remains the same at 5.9 mils. This includes 3.9 mils inside millage and 2 point outside millage. The inside millage includes 1.1 to the general fund, 1.3 mils to the police pension fund, and 1.5 to the fire pension. The outside mils is 1.1 for the mils to the general fund, bond retirement, and .33 to the police pension, and .25 to the fire pension, and .42 to the street lighting. We have an ordinance authorizing approval of the purchase of a Honda Rancher 420 ATV and accessories for the Brooklyn Recreation Department in the amount of $8,323.85. We have an ordinance authorizing the city of Brooklyn to enter into Ohio Department of Transportation Office Jobs and Commerce Agreement relating to the dedicated right-hand turn lane off of Tiedemann Road approaching I-480. This grant will be for $75,000. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Brooklyn to enter into Cuyahoga County Agreement relating to the dedicated right-hand turn lane off of Tiedemann. This would be, the county would be giving us monies for $220,000 to help offset the cost. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to retain Clemens Nelson Associates to conduct labor negotiations on behalf of the city. This would be for $15,000 right now. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of one 2017 Freightliner M2 Minimax one-armed garbage truck for use by their service department for a total of $203,743. This would actually go on to next year's budget, and Andy Sellhertz will explain this a little bit more in his report. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of 35 new and upgraded 15 mobile radio parts, labor, and installations by use of the service department from Cleveland Communications for a total of $90,646. This is because of the upgrade going to Parma Dispatch so they can be connected additionally to make sure that our service department's safe in their use. Instead of using their cell phones, talking against the Brooklyn law, that they'll use the in-house radio system that's attached to the car. We also have an ordinance authorizing inter-fund transfers and advances for 2015. This includes $605,470 from general fund to budget stabilization, $200,000 from the general fund to Economic Development Fund, and $291,819.54, which is under the millage. It goes from the general fund to the Safety Forces Construction Fund, and then moves to the bond retirement fund. We have an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations for this year. This is 5.8% less than originally estimated at the beginning of the year for a total of We have an ordinance for the temporary appropriations for this year. Right now, we're at $22,721,795. This is subject to change. This is only the temporary going forward. Okay, now we'll have public session, so if anybody has anything for the good and welfare of the city, please step forward, state your name, address, and please keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Good evening, everyone. Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. I'd like to say my neighbor friend had a problem before Thanksgiving, and the police came and helped, and very courteous, and helped out very nicely. And that question, I know we have the new 911 system, and I was reading an article in paper, and I don't know, is it the new 911 Plus or is it the old system? They were talking about two different systems. There's an old one that's out there in some cities, and that are moving to the new system.
Chief Mulkey?
Do you want me to address that now?
Yes, please.
The system that Parma Dispatch currently has allows them to locate a cellphone when the 911 phone comes in within a couple hundred feet. So I'm not really familiar with the Plus or whatevers, but it is the latest and greatest 911 technology.
That's the one they were talking about. Okay, great.
Does anyone else have anything for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn? Okay, we will now move on to reports of committees, commissions, and board. First up tonight is Finance Committee, Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. The Finance Committee met earlier this evening at 6:15. We pushed up our start date based on the large number of items on our agenda this evening. The public is always welcome and encouraged to attend. We addressed the following agenda items. We recommended approval of authorizing requests for bids for the 2016 Streets Program. As Ms. Gallagher mentioned, the amount is $927,200. Just a note, at our budget meeting, we did agree to add West 62nd in. They initially weren't on the schedule for a few more years, but we added that one in. The timeline is as follows. Anticipating council authorization this evening, they'll do some testing in the preliminary design from December 15th to January 15th. Final design specs and the estimate from January 4th to January 29th. Bidding and negotiating from February 9th to February 24th. Contract award by council anticipating March 14th. Pre-construction meeting anticipated April 4th. You know, I think we've made progress this year and last year in trying to get out to bid earlier. You know, I think next year, we're going to try and get it done even earlier because, as we saw last year, the earlier you get out to bid, the lower your prices are. And that means we're able to do more. We also approved the request for the 12-month extension for the HVAC full maintenance program for the John M. Coyne Rec Center. And we approved the change order for the landfill. And Resolution 2015-11, we're going to be passing by emergency measure this evening. And just to note, that 5.9 mil total represents no increase to your property taxes in 2016 from the city. Resolution 2015-12, we also recommended passing by emergency measure. We submit our tax budget to the county in July. They, the Budget Commission then reviews it and has to give it their seal of approval. And now, basically, it's back to us to reaffirm the tax budget with the seal of approval by the Budget Commission. Ordinance 2015-67 is up for third reading and adoption. That's the purchase of the ATV for the rec center. Ordinance 2015-69, we recommended approval by emergency. This is the Ohio Department of Transportation Office of Jobs and Commerce Grant that we discussed at our last meeting. Ordinance 2015-70 is new on our agenda this evening, but this is another grant that Mrs. Miglerino, our Director of Economic Development, was able to secure for the dedicated right-hand turn lane. Ordinance 2015-71, we're going to pass by emergency measure this evening. We did have a discussion. This is for our labor negotiations, our representation, and we are going to amend this to include a not-to-exceed $15,000 figure. Ordinance 2015-72, which is on first reading, that is the Minimax one-armed garbage truck that Mr. Sellhertz will expand on a little bit later. Ordinance 2015-73 is going to be on first reading. That's the new mobile radios and upgrade of our existing radios for the service department. And those should have a useful life of approximately 12 years. Ordinance 2015-74, the transfers and advances, that'll be passed by emergency this evening. Ordinance 2015-75, which is our amended annual appropriations, will be on first reading. The net result is a decrease in the general fund of $509,180.46, and the net result for all funds is a decrease of almost $1.7 million. This is what we do at the end of the year to try and clean up the funds. We can reduce some of those that have been unexpended while adding to those areas where we need additional funds. And ordinance 2015-76, the temporary appropriations for 2016. Basically, we're taking what our current appropriation is, and the only thing that's going to be in there for the capital improvement fund to get us going at the beginning of the year will be our obligations, such as we've got payments that we're making on some energy improvements over at the rec center, and also for our Streets Program. And then, by March 31st, we'll have to have our permanent appropriations adopted. And that completes my Finance Committee report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Recreation Board, Councilwoman Tansky.
Thank you. Brooklyn's Friday night basketball will be held on Friday, on Friday nights, beginning January 15th, 2016 through February 19th, 2016. The program is open to residents only for grades 2 through 6. Registration has begun and will continue through January 9th, 2016, at the Brooklyn Rec during the regular business hours. You must show your current resident ID card at the time of registration. The cost is $35. All sessions will be held from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Group 1, grades 2 and 3, Skills Clinic from 6:00 PM to 6:45 PM. Group 2, Buddy Basketball from 7:00 PM to 7:45 PM. Group 3, grades 4, 5, and 6, from 8:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Group times are subject to change based on number of participants. Street shoes will not be permitted on the gym floor. Please bring with you a pair of athletic shoes that will be worn on the gym floor during your scheduled session. If the school is, if the school is closed due to inclement weather on a day of the program is scheduled, the program will not be held on that day. Make-up dates will not be given. The next rec board meeting will be held on Monday, December 21st, 2015, in the rec center meeting room, 7:00 PM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Legislative Updates, Councilwoman Belbeer.
Thank you. New legislation now in the Ohio House would allow first-time drunk-driving offenders to receive unlimited privileges with a special license if they agree to have ignition interlocks installed in their vehicles. House Bill 388 would expand the use of ignition interlocks. These are devices that allow motorists to operate their vehicles only after they provide a breath sample indicating a blood alcohol concentration lower than .025. Under the bill, a judge could give DUI offenders unlimited privileges and reduce the offender's license suspensions by up to 50%. The drivers would have to obtain special restricted licenses indicating they are allowed to drive vehicles only with ignition interlocks. House Bill 388 also states that offenders caught driving a vehicle without an ignition interlock or giving a breath sample at the level above the required limit could have their suspension periods doubled and be required to wear a device that continuously monitors alcohol intake. The legislation would further require that all ignition interlocks in Ohio be equipped with cameras starting in 2020. The look-back period also increases from six to 10 years. Without, again, getting caught driving drunk, or they would face additional license suspension time. House Bill 392 would expand the state's anti-domestic violence laws to allow civil protection orders against current or former romantic partners. Currently, Ohio law defines domestic violence as occurring between spouses, family members, or those who are cohabitating. Ohio and Georgia are the only states with domestic violence laws that don't apply to people who are dating. Representative Amelia Sykes of Akron, one of the sponsors, stated, "It is a disgrace that Ohio is one of the only two states who have yet to make this change." House Bill 396 would create a list of prohibited species. That includes animals such as the nutria, a rodent native to South America that destroys vegetation and wetlands habitat, the Eurasian collared dove, and several species of carp, snakehead fish and snails, the Asian longhorn beetle, and the emerald ash borer. Those who possess, introduce, or sell such animals could face a fine up to $1 million and four years in prison, depending on the circumstances. Two House Democrats from Northeast Ohio have proposed a statewide ban on manufacturing or selling facial scrubs, toothpaste, and other products that contain synthetic microbeads, saying the tiny particles are polluting Lake Erie and killing the fish. Microbeads are bits of plastic that are too small to be caught by water treatment plant filters, and they end up in our lakes, our rivers, and other bodies of water, where they often become a toxic meal for fish and could, in turn, be ingested by humans. At least seven states have already passed restrictions on microbeads, and Congress is considering a nationwide ban. House Bill 197 prohibits over-the-counter sale without a prescription of dextromethorphan to a person under 18 years of age. Dextromethorphan is an active ingredient in Robitussin cough syrup. A retailer selling it to a minor without a prescription will be charged with a minor misdemeanor, calling for a fine of up to $150. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. The Board of Zoning Appeals meeting will be this Thursday, December 17th, at 6:00 PM in the City of Brooklyn Conference Room to hear a request from Sean McGrath for a 96-square-foot variance to the maximum size for an accessory structure to construct a 240-square-foot shed located at 10401 Bid Off Road, permanent parcel 43302015. The Planning Commission meeting on December 3rd was canceled. It was rescheduled for this Wednesday, December 16th, at 6:00 PM. To hear a request from Agile Sign and Lighting Maintenance to install a freestanding sign with full-color message, Center for Business Identification of Cleveland Bible Baptist Church located at 4431 Tiedemann Road. Request from Watkins Lighting to install a freestanding sign for business identification of Janesa Patel State Farm Insurance located at 4342 Ridge Road. Request from David Sternberg of Five Star Media to erect a 14-by-48 double-faced billboard sign with lighting located at 5111 Tiedemann Road. A request from Bert Edwards of Intermodal One LLC to construct an additional parking lot located at 8515 Clinton Road. And a request from the Lutheran Church of the Good Shepherd for a lot split consolidation of permanent parcel 43224013B located at 8235 Memphis Avenue. The Lutheran Church of the Good Shepherd to 8023 Memphis Avenue, St. Elias Church. These are permanent parcels 43224004, 005, 006, 010, and 042. Next, we'll hear from Public Works and School Board Liaison, Councilwoman Sellhertz.
Thank you. As we had a Public Works meeting tonight at 6:00 PM, we covered two items. First one was request of purchase of new radios and upgrade of existing radios for the service department fleet. We discussed it, had a vote on it, voted to pass it on to Finance and on to Council for first reading. Other item we talked about was the purchase of a 2017 Freightliner Labri Minimax. It is similar to what we have already in the service department, but smaller. The current vehicles we now have are 33 cubic yards. This would be a 14 cubic yard unit. It would fit into the streets in Brooklyn Acres and also into the other tight-fitting spaces there on the Thursday route. This would provide us with a couple options or a couple solutions to current problems is when the current units that we do have, and one is four years old, one's a little bit newer, they do break down. The progress we've made from going from the manual process to automation, when they break down, it might be for a day or two to two weeks, we go backwards. This unit could be a backup unit on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. On Mondays and Thursdays, we could alleviate or have available two other people that would not be working anymore on the back of a truck, could be actually doing other duties. Price of the vehicle is roughly about $203,000. Mr. Verba is going to give us an adjusted amount yet for upgrade on the warranty, because it's for a medium truck warranty, and we should probably try to get a heavy-duty truck warranty on it. That's kind of a quick nutshell of what's going into that. So that was recommended by the Public Works Committee to Finance and Council, also to go on to first reading. It is quite a chunk of change, $203,000, but it's a vehicle that would be used and not just be bought and sitting in the garage as a spare. It's kind of similar to what we have with the V-hook, with the leaf truck, and now it's ready for the salt and snow plowing season. That concludes my Public Works report. For the school report, Brooklyn hockey team did play on Thursday, December 3rd, against the Lyria Catholic at the Q. They came up short that game. They've had several successful games since then. Last night, they played against Nordonia. They're 3-2. Please check the school website for all the sports schedules for the school. Price for a ticket is minimal. You can see what the students are doing at Brooklyn High School. Next school board meeting is Tuesday, December 15th, in room 173, at 6:00 PM. Public is welcome and encouraged to attend as your school system for your children. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, we'll move on to reports from council. First up tonight is Mary Belbeer.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to express my most sincere condolences to Luke Rosado on the passing of his wife. Luke is a wonderful, wonderful gentleman who is always at the senior center, either behind the desk, in the kitchen, giving advice, taking advice, whatever. But I am so sorry to hear about your wife. I only met her a few times, and I can truly say she was just a lovely, lovely woman. And just so you know, you and your family are in my prayers and my thoughts, and if there's anything I could do, please don't hesitate to ask. Luke, I'm so sorry to hear that, but I'm glad your wife is no longer suffering. Also, many, many thanks to the Chamber of Commerce and the students at Polaris. Last week, there was a wonderful, wonderful dinner for our Mayor Belbeer on his retirement. The students prepared a fabulous lunch. The food was wonderful. The atmosphere was fabulous. A lot of people came up and talked and reminisced about the mayor, and so it was nice to see so many wonderful people pay tribute to our mayor. On another note, just for your information, Polaris School has this wonderful chefing program there. But I just want to give everyone a little bit of a heads up. They do have their cookie sale this coming Friday, and I could tell you, it is wonderful. Don't bake, just buy your cookies there. They have a wonderful bakery right next to the school. They hand-dip chocolates. It's under the direction of an actual pastry chef. So treat yourself to it, and just take out and support the school. It's really a wonderful opportunity to help the kids out. They even have, the children, the kids even made gingerbread houses this year, and they are just fabulous. You can't imagine how the intricate details on the gingerbread houses. Just to go there and see them is worth the trip. Also, I live near Rodone over there on East Lane Drive, and I've been watching the past two weeks, the demolition of the school. It's so bittersweet. Here you see a beautiful landmark, you know, an old landmark like that, you know, being demolished, but I hope people have, you know, came by and took pictures, and a lot of people have sent their kids there, a lot of people went there. So I do hope that people were able to, you know, reminisce a little bit about it and grab photographs of it, but just remember, bigger and better things are coming there. I'd also like to thank the service department this year. They did a great job. I know everybody did great jobs on their homes, but Mr. Verba, you and the service department did a fabulous job on the lights. I even like how you decorated the bocce court. I bet the guys liked that. And then lastly, another special condolences to a family man by the name of Sammy Catania. Many of you may not know who he is, and you're probably unfamiliar with the name, but let me tell you who he is. He is one of the pioneers of independent fine dining. He owned and operated Sammy's in the Flats, if anyone ever remembered that. And years ago, that was the place to be. But he also helped put our wonderful city, Cleveland, on the map, and it's now known as one of the top culinary cities in the country. And I'd just like to say, thanks, Sammy. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up is Kevin Tansky.
Thank you. Ordinance 2015-71, authorizing the mayor to retain Clemens Nelson Associates to conduct labor negotiations. labor negotiations. I have discussed this ordinance in detail with our new incoming mayor, Katie Gallagher, about my concerns regarding excessive spending, in which the city has spent over $100,000 on drawn-out negotiations in the past. We also discussed the hiring of a law director with a labor background versus an outside firm to conduct these negotiations, or the possibility of using federal mediation as another alternative if the unions agree. This would greatly reduce the city's spending on such negotiations. I would hope all of us on Council learned from the last negotiations and that our city would consider other alternatives and not get drawn into long-term labor negotiations, which proven to be counterproductive. For this reason, I will be voting no to another ordinance, 2015-71, which I know will result in more wasted tax dollars. I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up is Andy Sellharts.
Thank you. Very simple to all the employees, staff, residents, have a very Merry Christmas. If you have some neighbors that don't get out too much, if they're a little bit older or whatever, have some difficulties, maybe spend a minute or two, take some time. I know that's a four-letter word, "time," but say hello to them over the holidays. They might appreciate it. And that's about it. And my condolences also to Luke, knowing you for the last couple of years and understand what you're kind of going through, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Tony DiMarco.
Luke, I'd like to offer my personal condolences on the passing of Dee. I've gotten to know the two of you in the last six years I've been on Council, and I can't think of a more loving couple and all the time that you guys spent up there. So I know she'll be missed. She actually donated a few house decorations to me, which I still have hanging, so feel free to stop on by and we can shoot the breeze a little bit. And again, for the, all the employees, their families, and all the residents and their families, I'd like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Next up is Ron Van Kirk.
Thank you. Just wanted to congratulate the winners of the Christmas light decorating. And we get very busy, but now that I have a one-year-old son, he doesn't let me get busy enough to not see the lights anymore, and so he's always pointing down the street. In our city, I drive around a lot of the cities, Brooklyn does a fantastic job decorating. Even on my little street, Manoa, where we live, the residents, even on that street have done a fantastic job. So thank you for making the city beautiful. I know that I enjoy it. My son just absolutely loves it. And on that note, I do want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, especially being prayers for like Luke and the loss of his wife. When you lose a loved one, it's always difficult. When you lose a loved one around Christmas time, it makes it even worse. And so anyone who's been in that situation certainly knows that, and so our thoughts and prayers are with Luke and others who have lost loved ones around this time. But everyone else have a very Merry Christmas. Remember why we celebrate this season. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Kathy Pucci.
Thank you. I too would like to offer my sincerest condolences to Luke on the passing of his wife Dee. Dee was a wonderful woman who I always looked forward to seeing. She always had words, very kind words and words of encouragement for me, which I really appreciated. Over the last several years, even though she had some serious health problems, she had such a positive outlook on things. It was truly amazing, and Luke really did an extraordinary job devoting himself to her care. You are in my thoughts and prayers, and I'm very sorry for your loss. I too would like to thank the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce for the very nice luncheon they had last Thursday to honor Mayor Bellbeer on his retirement, and I can echo what Mrs. Bellbeer said about the wonderful job that the students did at Polaris on preparing the luncheon, including desserts. And there's a lot that Polaris has to offer that I think sometimes maybe the average resident isn't aware of, so maybe next year, take the time to learn what they have. Mrs. Bellbeer mentioned what they have going on in the culinary field. I know they have a beauty shop there. You can get a manicure at a very reasonable rate, and so just take the time. They also have adult education courses, and they will be on the ballot again, most likely in 2016. They had a very small increase on that did not pass, first time in either 31 or 32 years that they've been on the ballot. But it really is such a tremendous resource that so many of our Brooklyn students have been able to take advantage of, and when you go proportionately, Brooklyn has the highest level of participation of all the communities. Congratulations to the winners of the house decorating contest, and I would also like to thank everyone who took the time to decorate. As Mr. Van Kirk mentioned, really, we have a lot of residents that go all out, and I would just like to thank them for making our community a little bit brighter over the holidays. This past weekend, we continued a longstanding Brooklyn tradition of Santa's visit. This is one of the things that really makes our community unique, and I can still remember when my sons were little, the anticipation, when they would hear the music and the announcement that Santa was coming, and then, you know, once he got in sight, they would run outside to meet him. And it's just, the excitement that the kids have is just wonderful, and I know that because of the good weather this past weekend, according to Chief Milkie, was one of their busiest years ever. I'd like to thank and recognize the following people: Captain Gary Sunde Meyer, Wally Parker, Nick Marulis, Donna Kennedy, Bill Utix, Jimmy Thede, Dan Parker, Vern Cutridge, and Ron Magi. These people, they do this on a volunteer basis. They dedicate their own time to continue this tradition, and I know I was talking to Wally last week, and I forgot, was it since 1966 that you've been involved?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven. He moved here in 1966 and saw Santa coming down the street for the first time, got involved the next year, and he's been involved every year since 1967. So thank you for all you do for continuing this wonderful Brooklyn tradition. I guess I'd like to make a little bit of a comment on the ordinance regarding hiring outside council to represent us in our labor negotiations. You know, I'm all for saving money, and we are exploring some strategies that may end up with that result, but at the same time, we do have to have adequate representation. We currently have an acting law director right now who, because of time constraints and labor negotiations in another city where he is law director, he's unable to assist us with that, and he was very upfront with us when we brought him on. But as a city, we need to make sure our interests are represented adequately, and of all the quotes that were sought, Clemens Nelson was by far the cheapest price per hour. It's a dollar fifty, I'm sorry, $150 an hour, and that's for, you know, some of their principal attorneys. That is not for any consultants or assistants. Now, one of the reasons that they're able to provide us with a lower rate like that is the fact of the relationship we have. Our HR consultant, who's here about one day a week, is with that firm, so he has already done a lot of the foundational groundwork necessary for this. So we have already paid by way of having this HR consultant onboard for some of this work already. So I think it's a natural extension that we contract with his firm, and we are going to only have the figure not to exceed $15,000 to start with, so I am in support of that. And finally, I would just like to thank all of our employees, our directors, department heads, chiefs, for all of your efforts in 2015. I think it was a good year. I personally appreciate all your efforts. I know I'm in, you know, contact with all of them regularly on either things that come up or complaints that residents have, and I appreciate how everybody handles everything in a very timely manner, and I would like to wish all of you, your families, and all of our residents, a very Merry Christmas. Thank you. That completes my report.
Thank you. Luke, I'm so very sorry for your loss. The mayor just told me right before this council meeting started, and you will definitely be in my prayers this holiday season. You know, Ron is right. For some reason, you know, the holidays, getting through at any time, losing somebody but right before, it just makes it very difficult, so you will be in my thoughts and prayers. I'd like to thank the Cleveland Baptist Church for hosting a lunch for all the employees here in the City of Brooklyn. It was a nice Merry Christmas to the employees. The food was fabulous, and going along with their other additional things that they do for our city, they're going to be hosting their third annual Christmas in Brooklyn. It's this Saturday, December 19th, at 6:00 PM in the Brooklyn Senior Center for the musical "Christmas and His Presence" will be performed. This musical blends the true meaning of Christmas with classical Christmas carols during drama and the true warmth that comes with Christmas. This annual Brooklyn event is free of charge and designed for you and your family in mind. It'll be located again at the Senior Center, which is at 7727 Memphis Avenue. Following the performance, they will have donuts, coffee, and hot chocolate. If you have any questions, please call 216-671-2822. I'd like to thank the Laurel Garden Club for having me out this past month. This month, they had someone, Sheena Dubronik, come in to help with holiday centerpieces. They picked different kinds of wreaths, and everything turned out beautiful. She showed up to do an entire centerpiece from, you know, the start to finish. And Sheena is a resident of Brooklyn, and she just acquired Ed Paulus and Sons Floris, so it's nice that two groups can come together for this benefit. If you ever think about joining the Laurel Garden Club, you can contact our new council person, Barb Politsky. The dues are only $8 a year, so that's very cheap, and it's, they meet once a month, and they'll start meeting again this March. The school hosted their holiday concert. Typically, we used to have the holiday gathering at the senior center, so all the school kids would come over to the senior center. So instead of doing that this year, we decided to go to the school since they do the concert anyways, and the City of Brooklyn provided Santa for pictures like we always do, and it just seemed to work out better. One thing we're going to have to probably learn for next year is we're going to have to ask Santa not to come on the same weekend as the musical. So again, Santa was out the same day. You know, last year, having a two-and-a-half-year-old, this is a big thing, because I remember as a kid, we missed it last year because it was during our daughter's nap time, so at the tail end of her nap, we ripped her out of her bed to take her outside to see Santa, and she was so excited. So I agree with Kathy. It's just one of those things that you can't beat in Brooklyn. Again, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce. They put on a wonderful lunch for the mayor, and, you know, each speaker that came up to talk about the mayor just had extraordinary things to say about the mayor, and I'm sure this will continue till the end of the year with all the good comments, and he just loves I'd like to talk about Kevin Tiansky's comments about the ordinance. I think Kathy probably hit on all of the points that I would bring up. Right now, as we have an acting law director, he's not in a position to negotiate these. We do not have a full-time law director. Again, we do not have a full-time law director, so we're left with really no other option but to outsource this at this point. So I understand where he's coming from, but there's no other way, and if there was another way, you know, we could talk about it, but, you know, in a position with no full-time law director, that's not an option, having, doing it in-house. I've been doing a business tour with our Economic Development Director, Fran McLaurenos, meeting the top 25 businesses so far. We've met with Sunveo, Plain Dealer, Keystone Tailier Manufacturing, Arrow International, Key Bank. I'm happy to say each one of these businesses are expanding and growing. Right now, International is bringing in 18 software specialists from Cleveland. These are high-paying jobs. They're moving to Brooklyn. They actually just acquired a new business today. They keep everything kind of on the low key, but they acquired more assets today, so they're expanding like crazy. Key Bank just acquired First Niagara, so they too are expanding. They plan on renovating their other building. So everything in Brooklyn is going well right now with the businesses I've met with so far, so it's great news, and I hope to continue the good news with these meetings. Lastly, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, the employees, residents, and I'll see you after the Christmas holiday. Move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you. Luke, I also would like to offer you my sincere condolences. This man must volunteer seven days a week. Every time I go to the senior center, he's there. If I don't see him there, he's volunteering at church, so he's a wonderful, wonderful resident. One of the fun things of being mayor, and I like that every year, is when the third graders come over here to decorate the Christmas tree. So last week, the third graders from St. Thomas More came over, and they decorated the tree. Then we come in here, and they sit down, and I explain about the city government and so forth, and then I allow them to ask me questions, and that's where the fun begins. And I get everything you could possibly imagine, but this year, a little girl raised her hand, and I asked her what she wanted, and she wanted to know if Judge Judy ever sits up here. Then another one asked me, they said, "If you have a tough decision to make, mayor, do you call the president in to help you?" You know, so you never know what they're going to say, but it's always funny. The sewer project on Ridge Road by Orchard Grove is finally done, and that traffic's back to normal, so that's good. And I also wanted to thank Mr. Van Kirk and the Baptist Church for the meal they put on for the city employees. It was very good and was very well-received. Thank you. And they've already spoken about Polaris. I also want to thank Polaris and the Chamber of Commerce for holding that lunch for me. It was very, very nice. The city has received an award from the Government Finance Offices Association of the United States and Canada for Financial Reporting Achievement. It's for our CAFER. The CAFER is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It was addressed to Dan Anovich, but Dan deserves a lot of the credit, but also his staff. Between his staff and him, they produced it, and this is the award, if anybody cares to look at it. So I want to thank Dan and congratulate your staff also. And I also want to wish everyone a Merry and Happy Christmas. Thank you.
Moving on to directors' reports, tonight, we have Finance Director Dan Anovich.
Thank you, Council President Gallagher, and thank you, Mayor, for acknowledging the Finance Department. I want to do the same mention without the help of Joanne Haig, Celeste Westfall, and Cindy Simcoe. I mean, they do a fabulous job keeping the records, attending to the needs of our directors, and helping me present to the public an exceptional report that we do every year for the CAFER. So it's all about teamwork, and I've got a great team. I'd like to continue on with my normal report, talk about our revenues, but before I did, Council President Gallagher mentioned her tour of the businesses, and I think maybe I could add a little bit to it by telling you that the tax collections that we get from the Regional Income Tax Agency, I just got pretty much our year-end report, and the distribution this year is like $18,618,000. That's what we'll be receiving through the month of December, and that's up almost 8% on $1,340,000 from last year. So to add to your comment about the robust growth in the business community in Brooklyn, these numbers attest to that, and we're up almost 7% over 2014, and each year, we've grown in our collection of income tax. So it's because of the growth in business, the addition of new employees, and the profitability of our resident corporate, our corporate residents. So that's attesting to that. Speaking of that, our other revenue, our general fund revenue year-to-date is $18,679,000. We've spent of that $14,954,000. We've encumbered, so we've set aside $483,000 of that, so our earning balance as of today in the general fund is $13,320,863.35, and the sum total of our entire funds right now today is $25,475,890.68. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, we have Fire Chief Joe Zemig.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to recognize Ferris Metals and their administrators over there. When they were at the fire station some time ago, the topic came up with some of the firefighters and forcible entry and a prop that we could use to actually practice steel door entry and things like that. So these folks went back without us knowing, and they actually fabricated and built a prop that is probably worth about $5,000 to $10,000, and delivered it to the fire station so now the guys can actually practice constantly forcible entry on steel doors and entering regular doors and locks and things like that. So I want to thank Ferris Metals. It's just another way to get expertise and training, and, you know, it's kind of hard to kind of go around and break everybody's door and to get training in it, so now we have a prop to do that, so. Okay? That's all I had. So, okay, that's all I had to say. Thanks.
We'll move on to requests.
Excuse me, may I be recognized? I just wanted, I thought of one more thing I wanted to say. And that was, I wanted to thank our police department for all their efforts in locating the missing teen we had in Brooklyn. I know that when there's an investigation going on, many times, there's not as much information forthcoming as maybe the public would like. But our officers worked literally day and night to bring a positive resolution to this very serious situation. And I just want to thank you and the members of your department, Chief Milky. Thank you.
Sergeant Tenefold is the...
Sergeant Joe Tenefold.
Move on to requests to advertise for bids for the 2016 Streets Program. As I said before, it's $927,200.
Move to authorize advertising for bids.
Second.
To advertise for bids, Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Andy Sellhertz.
Yes.
Katie Gallagher.
Yes.
Tony DiMarco.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Request for 12-month extension for HBAC Full Maintenance Program for the Recreation Center. Again, that's $26,868.
Move to approve.
Second.
To approve, Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Andy Sellhertz.
Yes.
Katie Gallagher.
Yes.
Tony DiMarco.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Resolution 2015-11 requesting the county fiscal officer to advance taxes from the proceeds of the 2015 tax levies pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 321.34.
Introduce, bow, suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Andy Sellhertz.
Yes.
Katie Gallagher.
Yes.
Tony DiMarco.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
To adopt, Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Andy Sellhertz.
Yes.
Katie Gallagher.
Yes.
Tony DiMarco.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
To adopt, Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Andy Sellhertz.
Yes.
Katie Gallagher.
Yes.
Tony DiMarco.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Orderance 2015-67 authorizing and approving the purchase of one Honda Rancher 420e ATV and accessories for the Brooklyn Recreation Department.
Move to adopt.
Second.
To adopt, Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Andy Sellhertz.
Yes.
Katie Gallagher.
Yes.
Tony DiMarco.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
To adopt, Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Andy Sellhertz.
Yes.
Katie Gallagher.
Yes.
Tony DiMarco.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
To adopt, Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Andy Sellhertz.
Yes.
Katie Gallagher.
Yes.
Tony DiMarco.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Orderance 2015-69 authorizing the city of Brooklyn to enter into Ohio Department of Transportation Office of Jobs and Commerce Agreement relating to the dedicated right-hand turn lane off of Tiedemann Road, approach to I-480.
Introduce, bow, suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Andy Sellhertz.
Yes.
Katie Gallagher.
Yes.
Tony DiMarco.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
To adopt, Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Andy Sellhertz.
Yes.
Katie Gallagher.
Yes.
Tony DiMarco.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Orderance 2015-70 authorizing mayor of the city of Brooklyn to enter into a county of Cuyahoga, Ohio Agreement relating to the dedicated right-hand turn lane off of Tiedemann Road, approaching I-480.
Introduce, bow, suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Andy Sellhertz.
Yes.
Katie Gallagher.